Okay, you guys are all ready. We are ready too.
I'm ready.
All right, thanks Ben. Thank you guys. Thank you very much. So Stacey, are you ready?
Yeah.
All right, you're ready. All right. So we will officially call the February 28th, 2024 special meeting of the Board of Selectmen to Order. If you guys want to join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the good love of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so now the reason you're all here. Nobody's ever at our meeting, so this is exciting. We have interviews for the Charter Revision Commission. We're gonna start, so I did want to acknowledge that Gisela Hama, Stephen Adams, and Linda Camilio all threw their applications since the last meeting we had. Just a brief overview of what we're gonna do. We're gonna, we have our, one of our town attorneys with us today, and he's gonna give a quick overview, just so you guys know what you might be getting yourselves into. And then we're gonna go through all of the interview, interviewees, and we'll ask everybody the same question. Don't feel like you have to stay afterwards. We won't be making any decisions until the next meeting. So once you're done interviewing, you're welcome to stay for our whole meeting where you can take off and leave. So I'll turn it over to Brian if you want to come up, I think, so that way, oh, right here, yeah, if you can go right there, that'd be great. And while we have Brian up here, I did just want to say, and I'm sure you might want to add this, we just thank you guys very much for applying. It's always a hard decision to then narrow it down, but it means a lot that you've all applied, and it's not, none of the board commissions are easy. This one is definitely gonna be a heavy lift, so we really do appreciate the application.
And just so you guys know, Ben is on the phone, so.
Yeah, Ben is here.
He is.
He's here. So thank you. So yeah, Brian, do you want to give a brief overview?
Sure, seems kind of beautiful.
Don't forget, you're also on TV.
I know. Hope I look okay for it. So, good afternoon, I'm Brian Eastep with Conley Law and Judic and Sheena Monaco. We are the Law Director's Office for the Town of Stonington. Just briefly, your Charter Revision. You're reviewing your Charter with an eye on clarity, flexibility, accountability, and evading, evading the culture of disregard or paralysis. You're kind of looking at the whole Charter under these circumstances. What's the scope going to be? Well, the scope is actually open. Once a Charter Commission is established, you can look at whatever you want to in the Charter. You can make recommendations, whatever you want to in the Charter. However, you want to keep an eye on the fact that ultimately it's gonna come back to the Board of Selectmen, either accepted or not accepted. So if the Board comes out with things they would like you to look at, it would be in your best interest to look at those things, because that's what they're asking you to do. If it's made clear to you that there's things that they aren't really interested in looking at, again, you have the right to open it up and do whatever you want to. It's like, people talk about a constitutional convention. What would happen if we had another one that we haven't had since the 1700s? Well, it's the same thing. You can make any recommendations you want to on that. So the process is controlled by statute. So what will happen is initially is the Board of Selectmen will decide to establish a Charter Revision Committee, Commission on that. Once they've established it, within 30 days, they have to select how many members are going to be on the Commission. It's gotta be somewhere between five and 15 people. We recommend, and everyone who does these recommends, it's gonna be an odd number of persons, because you're gonna want, you're not gonna want ties on things as far as that's concerned. We're looking now, I think we're still looking at a election of 2025 as the option on that. So the good part on that is, is you have a long time, relatively speaking, to go through the whole process. So Board establishes, within 30 days, they select the Commission. Then they tell you when they want the first draft report to be back to them. Under the timelines that have been set up, and by the way, the town has hired an attorney, Stephen Mendick, who does charters all throughout the state, who will assist the Charter Commission, either live at the meetings or not at the meetings, depending upon what the Commission wants on that. He's done over 30 Charter Commissions throughout the state, so he's gonna assist you with a lot of these timeframes. But the point is that the, the Board of Selectmen will establish when they want to see the first report back. If we follow the timelines, kind of, you're going to do it, they're gonna be looking sometime in May of 2025 for it to come back to them. So you're gonna have a long time, though you don't have to take that long, but that's gonna be the timeframe. They're gonna establish a date. You have to have a draft report back to them by that date. If it's not back to them by that date, the Commission is dissolved by the Board of Selectmen as not having completed their duties. There's no extending it, there's no anything on that. You're given a date that it has to come back. Once the report comes to the Board of Selectmen, there has to be a public hearing. Actually, there's gonna be public hearings going on while you're established, assuming you're members of wherever the establishment is. There will be public hearings, there will require public hearings, both for the Commission and also for the Board of Selectmen. When it comes back to the Board of Selectmen, they will also have a public hearing, and they have 45 days to decide what they're going to do with it when it comes to them. They can reject it, and then the Commission dies. They can, they can send it back saying, we want you to look at these things that you didn't look at, or look at removing these things that we don't like on. Then you bring it back to the Board of Selectmen again, and at that point, again, they can decide, nope, we don't like it, thanks, or yes, we like it. And then that starts the, the whole process of it getting on the November of 2025 election calendar. And there are specific state statutes about how far out you have to do that, when you have to submit to the Secretary of State, when you have to have the referendum vote basically done as far as that's concerned. So that's, that's really it. I mean, because you're looking at the 2025, you're gonna have a long time relatively to look at it, so you won't be time compressed. I can tell you that I represent another municipality who's just, just established their commission, and they're looking to put it on the November 2024 election calendar, which is extremely compressed. And it may work, and it may not, and we're gonna find out once they establish it. But that's basically how the system, how it works. Like I said, it's, it's run by statute, there's specific things that have to be done under the statutes. Steve is very well versed in that, he will assist you on that. His plan is, the same way he did, he's doing with the other municipality that I'm working with him at, he will bring in experts in the field to talk with you, pros and cons of things you may want to do and things you don't want to do as far as that's concerned, be able to assist you on that. Like I said, he'll be here as little or as much as you need, and as much as the Board.
The Board.
The Board. So obviously, there's a tie-in on that as well, but, so that's kind of where you are on that. It could be, again, because you're, you're spreading it out, depending upon how much you want to look at, it could be you're meeting every couple of weeks, you're meeting once a month, it could be you're meeting more at the beginning while you work things out, and then less as it goes along, as far as that's concerned. That's gonna be depending upon what happens there. So I don't know if there's any questions or?
Thank you, Brian. If you guys have anything pressing, since we do have Brian here, if you want to ask, we'll break some formality. If not, obviously, you can reach out to Stacey in between now and when we make the appointments, second week of, second week of March, so no pressure. I'll give you guys a minute.
Actually, I have a question. Typically, how long does it take in terms of time in a given month for these commissions to happen?
Again, it depends what your timeframe is, because you're looking at November of 2025, you have quite a while in order to meet and to be there. I mean, if you were looking at 2024 election, which, I mean, we're already almost in March, so you're talking, you know, eight months to get everything together. And actually, backed from that, because it's gotta be to the Secretary of State, I believe.
September, yeah?
Yes.
September.
September, it's gotta be, well, it's gotta be in the newspaper in September, it's gotta be to the Secretary of State even before that, but somewhere in that timeframe. So that means you're gonna be compressing it really down on that.
Yeah, but do you have to do it all at once? Or can you pick off easy things, get them done by November, and then keep going and do more controversial stuff later?
Good question. You don't keep going. Commission gets appointed for one sitting, and it's, sometimes that happens, you're, you're established one to kind of just do like maybe a tune-up, or just a minor look see if there's a couple of minor things you want to do on it. Obviously, less time on that. I mean, if you're looking to something major, changing the structure of your government, doing something like that, for example, going from a Board of Selectmen to a town manager, I'm not saying that's being looked at, I'm just saying, that's of course, a much bigger lift, because you've gotta get community involved, and you've gotta make sure that's what people want to do. So yeah, but once this Commission, assuming it's appointed and you're on it, once it's, turns its final report in, it's done, it's like, thank you for your service, now it's in the hands of the Board of Selectmen and the decision whether it's gonna go forward at that point, so.
You essentially have to create a second, you have to do it all over again.
Right, so we, basically, what we're signing on for here is nearly a two-year stint.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, if you get done sooner, you get done sooner. It's just, it's gotta be on either November of 2024, which again, is very quick on that, or November of 2025. I mean, you can, you can meet, you can do everything you want to do in six months, you could give your report to the Board, the Board could say, yep, great, we're happy with it, and then, or six months, you probably could get it on the 2024. But let's say it's early 2025, and you've got everything done, you don't have to keep meeting. Once you, once you turn in your final report, you're done, and it's just based upon the next election cycle, assuming they don't want to call a special election.
Were you concerned about turnout for just the Charter, because you need a certain percentage?
Oh, to register voters?
To register voters to turn out for it to be approved, and we don't have the highest turnout often with our referendums outside of something really large, so.
20%.
20%.
I could be wrong, it's either 10 or 20%.
Yeah, 10.
10, okay.
10.
So communities do have problems with that in the, in betweens on that.
But that doesn't apply in a regular election cycle.
No, regular elections, whoever comes in.
I have a question. How does the public, the town residents, get an opportunity to talk? I know we kept on a certain number of meetings by statute, but can we have more meetings than those, and at different times? Can we set as many meetings as we want in order to get input from the residents on what they're interested in?
I do not believe there's any restrictions on the number of public hearings you have. There are ones you're required to do by, both the Commissions required to do and the Board of Selectmen are required to do, because there, there are different intents with those meetings. The Commission's meetings are to look at the Charter and what you want to do. The Board of Selectmen's meetings is, okay, we've got the draft Charter for us, now we want to know what the public thinks on that before they decide what they want to do on that.
See, one of the things that we liked about the attorney that Brian introduced us to was, again, his experience of this, but also, as Brian kind of alluded to, he's done things for other towns where he's set up like panels of experts, so if there's a certain issue area you're looking at, he could bring in other towns or issue experts, and that could, if the Commission so chose, be something that then was open to the public to also hear from or pose questions. So he seemed very engaging and kind of wanting to have that kind of public engagement piece.
Well, I'm gonna correct you on this, and I will do very often, it's not your option to have it to the public. Every one of your meetings is gonna be public. So whatever, whatever you hear, the public can hear, they may not be able to be involved, because you aren't required to have public comment at those meetings, but your meetings are all F-LI-able, they're all going to be present. So if, if the public's really interested and wants to come to every one of your meetings, they can come and wherever you end up holding them, I don't know if you've talked about that yet, but I assume here is what it usually.
Or out of space.
Okay. So wherever you end up holding it, I mean, the public can come and watch every one of your meetings if, if they want to, or you can.
But to get the public engagement piece, yeah, I think you could either have public comment at those meetings, or you could actually frame them as more of a community engagement type meeting, so I think that would be potentially useful. But the only thing I'll add, just because Lynn brought it up as a kind of question, is we did look pretty extensively at trying to get it on the November 2024 ballot, per kind of some feedback from staff about their concerns about waiting longer, and Stacey can correct me if I'm wrong, but I feel like we, the Commission would have needed to have everything done by almost like June. So you'd be starting to meet at the end of March, you'd really have two months to do all this work, and we won't share much about our thoughts, because we want to hear from you, but I mean, one of our goals with this is always building trust in government and trying to fast-track a Charter Review just seems really irresponsible. So it was unfortunate, we really wanted to do for the November 2024, but it just doesn't seem possible. So that's why, you know, we're looking longer, but it does give the added benefit of having more time and flexibility and more time for public input.
And the other community I'm, I'm working with, they're gonna try to fast-track it with the understanding that worst-case scenario, they can't do it, and they're just gonna dissolve that Commission and then create another Commission, and probably with the same people on it, and then move it to the 2025. So, I mean, that's the circumstances that you have on that.
Okay, thank you, guys. Is there nothing else we can start with the interview?
I have one last question. Most Commissions have somebody advising them, and I know that there's going to be the lawyer, but we don't need to pay him to sit and listen to us unless we need him, right? Is there gonna be somebody from Board of Selectmen or?
No, because part of the reason also, we want the outside counsel, again, building trust in government, we didn't want it even to look like we were having any sort of heavy hand, like, once we appoint you and we give you our resolution that outlines what we'd like you to look at, it's really up to this independent Commission to look at it, so we really shouldn't be involved outside of the way it's outlined. So really, I don't think it'd be appropriate to have town staff there, which again, is why we felt like we need a legal counsel to also help. This person doesn't necessarily need to be at every single one of your meetings, but it will be, like I said, you'll take it, you'll think about it when you go home, like, this will be a heavy lift Commission, because we are gonna need, the attorney can write memos and can do some research and put things together, but you, you will need an active chair, an active, your recording secretary. We might be able to find a recording secretary if we put out really broadly, but, you know, we will be looking for some hands-on work here.
Danielle?
Yeah, Ben, go ahead.
Danielle?
Yeah?
Can you, can you just make sure that anybody that's speaking uses the mic?
Oh, yep, sorry.
We're still sitting in the heat.
I can hear you fine, I just can't hear Lynn or somebody else.
Okay, perfect, when they come up, we'll do that, sorry about that. So Ray is gonna talk to the audience, so I'll repeat it. Go ahead, Brian.
So who's going to write the, is this other attorney gonna write the final report or the final revisions that we might make?
So Ray asked about the final report that the Commission put forward, yes, that would be the, I mean, with obviously, you know, heavy input, yeah, but yes, that would be the idea, they'd be taking that on.
It's envisioned that he will assist in compiling the final draft of your report on the, on the recommended changes on that, so, which again, is, is the point, you know, when the one I'm on is doing a fast track, he said, well, I could, I could write a new Charter in like a couple of weeks, but the question is, is the public gonna buy it and what's going on? So that's why, you know, you want to make sure that it's something that the people want on that, because otherwise, you spend a lot of time and effort for it to get, you know, voted down, and then you're just where you are already.
Exactly. Thank you. Any other questions for Brian? All right, if not, we will start interviews. Brian, thank you, you don't need to stay.
Thank you.
So we're gonna go with Lynn and then Chris, because we have the fun privilege of going to a Board of Finance meeting after this. So, and then we have John, Bob, Ray, Marcia, June, and David. David, you're here earlier, so if they're not, we'll bump you up, but thank you, guys, and thank you for coming to hear Brian's overview. Okay, so Ben, if you're good, we'll start. Ben, do you want to ask any of the questions, or do you want me and Debbie just to do that?
No, you guys can do that.
Okay.
I have nothing to add, I'll, I'll drop it.
Okay, perfect. Do you want to start?
Sure, hold on.
So, sir.
I'm starting, yeah, I found my questions.
Okay.
Oh, okay. The first question, and you guys are all gonna get the same question. What is your opinion of the responsibilities and primary function of the Charter Revision Commission?
Am I supposed to hear this, or is this just for recording? For recording? You can hear, you can hear, Ben, you can hear me?
Ben, let us know if you can't hear Lynn, okay?
I think, well, my expectation of it is you're going to give us some guardrails. Can you hear me?
There, babe.
Is that better?
Yeah, that's good, thank you, man.
That'll be even better. Now you're right under my nose. So I'm expecting that you're going to give us kind of an outline of what you're looking for. I don't particularly myself have a horse in this race, I have a mouse in the race. I want one thing, which is for the WPCA to get some alternates. I would, you know, I'm hoping that, you know, this is going to be, well, personally, I think government runs pretty well, so I think that, I'm hoping that there's gonna be a limited number of things that we're gonna spend our time looking at, because it's a big Charter, and if we open up the whole thing and look at everything, that's all we're ever gonna do. And I think most people in town think, think government works pretty well. So, that answers your question.
Thank you. So could you share any relevant experience you have that you think would be specific to this Commission, and in responding, please include any professional or volunteer experience, and what unique skillset you feel you bring to the Commission?
Well, I've been moving around town government now for 22-plus years, served on the WPCA all of that time, with little prospect of getting off unless I get these old names. In my second term on the Board of Finance, the elected position, I served two terms on planning and zoning. I wrote a Plan of Conservation and Development in 2006. I served on a bunch of subcommittees, the Plan of Conservation and Development Implementation Committee most recently, which has now converted to the POCD. And I should state that if I am appointed to this, I will relinquish that, because my appointment to that is via the Board of Finance, and there's six other people who could do an admirable job on there. What else have I done? I've just, I've been involved in a lot of aspects of town government, and, you know, made extensive use of Town Hall, know the players in it, and what they do and how it operates.
Thank you.
You the last one?
Yep.
No, that's fine. Any professional or other experience you wanted to put on there, or just come toward you?
I have a lot of financial experience, which isn't really germane to this. Yeah, I'm interested in this, though, because it's something, I don't have a dog-eared copy of the Charter on my nightstand, right? So I know about the things that pertain to what it is I've moved around in, but I'm just, I'm interested generally in it, because it's a part of government that I don't really know that well. And when I saw who applied for it, I know everyone, and I knew I'd like to work with any or all of them.
So that wasn't actually my question, I was just.
Oh, sorry.
No, my, that's fine, no, that was, it was a follow-up.
Okay.
My question is actually, upon completion of the Charter Review Commission, what would you consider as a successful outcome?
Oh, definitely as much consensus as can be had from the public. But I'm not naive, I know that there will not be 100% consensus, but we should be able to have a clear sense of where the public stands on whatever it is we do.
Thank you. Ben, do you have any follow-up questions?
No, I do not, thank you.
Any questions for us?
No.
No? Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, I'll see you.
I know this whole setup is very awkward, I really appreciate everyone doing this. Thank you. I'll see you in two hours. Chris, you wanna come down? Just for those who don't normally do this, this is something we do for any regulatory Board, or Boards that have more than one person interested, we interview them at Board of Selectmen meetings, just to be transparent, but we recognize it's very awkward, so we appreciate you doing it. All right, Chris, same questions for you.
Okay.
Do you want to start yet?
Sure. All right. What is your opinion of the responsibilities and primary function of the Charter Revision Commission?
I think the primary responsibility of the Charter Revision Commission is to ensure that the town government is running optimally for its citizens. You know, and I think that making small tweaks to the Charter over time makes sense. The town changes over time, the demographics change, the economics change, so, you know, the Stonington that we have today and into the future is not the Stonington that we had 10 years ago, and when the last Charter Commission was, so.
You said that better than I have. I just feel that. All right, could you tell us about your relevant experience relevant to the Commission, and then if you want to touch on professionals, both volunteer experience or any unique skillset?
So I am a current member of the Board of Finance, elected in '21, and I think I personally did, you know, get into the process because of the most recent Charter Revision, and making those Board of Finance positions into elected positions. And I don't think I would have been on the Board of Finance had it not meant for that. So that's, you know, of interest to me personally, that our, our last Charter Commission was able to do that. Professionally, I'm a security analyst for IT, for AZ Corporation in our Stonington, a construction company, and I think the analytical mindset is really important here, really, being, I'm sorry, being able to take in a lot of information and develop recommendations and deliver those in a format that, you know, our town, our town people can understand, and then have that go to a, a referendum, I think that's, that's in my wheelhouse, so to speak. Other relevant experience, I do do a lot of volunteer work. I help with local rescues for animals, I am on the Board for Hope Inc., which is an organization that builds homes in New London. And I think that's it.
That's very good. Thank you.
Yeah. Upon completion of the Charter Review Commission, what would you consider a successful outcome?
I mean, there's the, there's the obvious answer, that it goes through a referendum and gets approved, but I think, you know, the metrics of a Charter Revision Commission are really for the future to decide. So it, we really have to be cognizant of what the changes we make will affect, how, how that will affect Stonington in the future. So ultimately, it's not for us to decide what is or is not a success, but, you know, how those changes affect us. So I think, staying cognizant of that is very important for this Commission.
Thank you. Thank you, Greg. Do you have any follow-up?
No, we don't.
Ben, do you have any follow-up question?
No, I do not, thank you.
Thanks, Ben.
Do you have any questions for us?
No, this is.
Thank you, Chris.
All right, thank you. We love, see, you all, so we're gonna call ours. Thank you both very much.
Thank you very much.
All right, next up is John. You're up next. It's fun, it's like a game show. There's no prize, though. Thank you.
Good evening.
So we'll ask you the same questions.
All right. What is your opinion of the responsibilities and primary function of the Charter Revision Commission?
I think, I think that they're, should be charged with making appropriate changes in, in the town government, and, you know, I've lived here for 50 years, and, and I've served on the Police Commission for five years, and I've been on, I don't know how many boards and nonprofits. I've submitted with my application and pile, so I don't want to go through all that stuff again. And I think it's, it's probably the most important Commission in the, in the town, for sure. I read the 2015 report, and, you know, I, I think they, they sort of indicated that you shouldn't have too many items, or nothing was gonna get approved, so I, that, that sounded a little convoluted to me, but, so that's what I know about Charter Revisions, is reading that report.
Thank you. So the next one, again, similar, if you want to really just talk about your, your personal or professional kind of volunteer or otherwise experience that you think is relevant to this Commission, or any kind of unique skillset that you bring, or you're gonna compete with everybody else.
Well, if you were likely to, I can, I can tell you what I do and what I've done. You know, I'm gonna go through this whole thing?
I think even just anything that you feel like a, a skillset you'd bring to the Commission that would kind of stand out and be useful, like Chris had mentioned, you know, he's analytical or?
Okay, well, we own Seaport Marine, we've owned Noine Shipyard, which we just sold, we own Spicer Gas and Grattan, where we have about 70 employees and 25,000 customers. I, I owned the Waterford Speed Bowl for 15 years, and we own Bridgeport Boatworks. And I, I've served. And I've served on the following boards, Springfield College, Bement School, Bank of Mystic Founder, Westerly Hospital Corporator, Mystic Community Center, Pine Point School, Pequot Community Foundation, Guard Art Center, Police Commission, Stonington, Mystic Aquarium, Westerly Hospital Foundation Executive Committee, Miss Quamka Club, I was treasurer for three years, golf chairman for three years and president for three years. I'm on the executive committee of the Mystic Aquarium and I'm board member at Ellen M. Hospital and Westerly Hospital and I'm chairman of the Westerly Hospital Foundation Board. Oh, that's...
You're a slacker. Oh, no, thank you. It's all good.
They're all good. I like doing that.
Do you want to ask that one?
Sure. Upon completion of the Charter Review Commission, what would you consider a successful outcome?
Oh my God, that's hard to answer without knowing what the issues would be. I, I mean, I think if there's some legitimate changes that need to be made, I would want to see those made. I mean, that's just, it's just such a large thing. I mean, maybe we'll be able to scale it down to something a little shorter.
Thank you. Do I know?
No, I don't.
Thank you. Ben, do you have any follow-up question?
I just wondered, you know, hi, John.
Hi, Ben, how you doing?
Good. I just wondered if you were not seated on the Charter Revision Commission, if you would consider, if you're seated on another commission? We have somebody vacant.
I didn't understand what exactly.
I think he was asking, would you consider if you weren't seated here, serving on any other commissions that have openings?
I don't know who would have openings and if I'd be interested in it or not, but maybe. I just thought this is pretty important. And, you know, I mean, it's good to give back. I've lived here for 50 years, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions for us?
Yeah, thanks.
Do you have any questions for us?
No.
All right. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Tom.
Thank you very much for having the opportunity to be interviewed here. I appreciate that.
Thank you. I think you were the first applicant we got. We probably should have gone first. So thanks for sitting through it. So again, same questions, the older of them.
All right. What is your opinion of the responsibilities and primary function of the Charter Revision Commission?
I think it's basic to make the town more efficient, more effective in its operations without overburdening the charter. I mean, the charter, I've read the commission's report in 2015 and I reviewed the statute that requires the commission on what the restrictions are. So I think it's, it's not simple, but that's what it means. You have to make the town more efficient, more effective without overburdening it.
Thank you. The next one is about, yeah, your professional and volunteer experience, any specific kind of unique skill set you think you'd bring to the commission?
I think my past employment in law enforcement and working for the insurance company for 15 years gave me the analytical skills that are necessary to look at things like this. I think that's important. I've been involved with the town in other ways. I was on the Police Commission for seven years. Three of those years I worked as the chairman of the commission under some turbulent times, interacting with not only the board, but other parts of the town government. So I'm very familiar with that. I have a very extensive volunteer besides a Stonington Police Commission. I work, I am on the President's Council at the Aquarium. I am the president of the Hunter Club of Connecticut, which takes care of the fallen police officers, firefighters, corrections officers, families killed in line of duty. I've been involved in that for 15 years. I am board directors on the Police Commission, Police Memorial Commission that maintains the police academy. So I think I have a lot of volunteer skills and I could go on and on, but I think that's enough.
Thank you.
Yep. Upon completion of the Charter Review Commission, what would you consider a successful outcome?
I think that our goal should be where we started out at. Would you want to make the town, the town more efficient and more effective in managing government for its residents?
Do you know?
No.
Ben, do you have any follow-up question?
No, I do not. Thank you, Tom.
Thanks, Ben. And I have, I have copies of my resume for you.
Oh, look at you. Oh, thank you. Thank you.
Got one for you too, Ben.
You got one. Thank you very much. All right.
Thank you very much.
Do you want to say?
Sure.
Go ahead, keep your time.
We're so fast.
Same question?
Same question, though. Sometimes we swap it up, but not today, so. What's your opinion of the responsibilities and primary function of the Charter Revision Commission?
I think we have to be responsive to the, to the people of this town. So it should be our job to make sure that we are as all-inclusive as possible and hear from people who, who have ideas and opinions on changes that might be made in the town. And at the end of the day, we have to sit down as a group and discuss what makes the, what makes the most sense for this town? What is something that can be accomplished? And is it a, is it a good change?
Thank you. So again, if you want to just comment on any professional or volunteer experience that is relevant to the commission and if you want to highlight any unique skill set?
I have a lifelong interest in the process. From, from when my, from when my father used to take me to Democratic Town Committee meetings in Westerly and I'd have to wait up for him when he was on the Town Council and wait for him to come home. But from that, I went on to become a lawyer. And I was, I've been involved in the process in the town also. When I moved my practice back to town, I was on the Police Station Building Committee that built this police station. Later on, I became chair of the Democratic Town Committee. Or I was, I was on the Democratic Town Committee for 20 years. 12 of those years I was chair. I've served on the Police Commission for five years and two of those years I was, I was chair of that. And also I was on a prior Charter Revision Committee, which I'm not sure if it was before 2000 or not, but it was, it was some time ago. And we, we considered some of the same, some of the same issues that might be facing us coming up.
Thank you.
Final question. Upon completion of the Charter Review Commission, what would you consider a successful outcome?
That we did our job, that we were as inclusive as, as possible. And although I liked what Lynn said initially about building a consensus, I don't know that it's necessarily our job to build a consensus, but we have to be responsible to the, responsive to the public and also responsible to your, your, your direction too. Because I believe that as part of the law that allows you to do a Charter Revision, we hear from you as to what your priorities are.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ben, do you have any follow-up questions?
No, I don't, Daniel. Thank you, Ray.
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you very much. Thank you, David. So David, you'd be go up next.
Yes, true.
Thank you for me, so great job. Like, I've been on the Boathouse Park so many, I know Kate shows.
Yeah, that's for sure.
Thank you very much. Do you want to say?
Sure.
So Ben, in case you have them in your order of packet where we bumped David Lee up and then we'll go June next.
So David, what is your opinion of the responsibilities and primary function of the Charter Revision Commission?
I think our primary function is to review the current charter and see if there are any recommendations we can make to make town government more effective and more responsive to the voters of our town.
Okay, so again, same thing, if you want to talk about any professional or volunteer experience relevant to the commission and then any unique skill set?
I haven't served in any commissions in the town. I'm hoping that I'll be viewed as a plus, coming in with a fresh set of eyes, not having been involved much in town government. So maybe I have no prejudices either for or against anything. As far as personal or professional experience, I spent 43 years in the retail lumber industry in southeastern Connecticut, 35 years in sales, customer service and engineering. So I think I have a wide background in building consensus and being able to explain my opinions and why I think something works or doesn't work. I am currently serving on the board of the Stonington Community Rowing Center, involved in Boathouse Park project. And that, and if you talk about a heavy lift for the commission, this one certainly has been a heavy lift. So I'm not afraid of hard work or having to commit to a long period of service.
Thank you for working on that. Do you want to do that?
Okay. Upon completion of the Charter Review Commission, what would you consider a successful outcome?
Successful outcome would be if the recommendations we present are accepted by the Board of Selectmen and also by the voters.
Thank you. Ben, do you have any follow-up questions for David?
Just one, ten questions for John. David, if you were seated on this commission, would you attempt perhaps at least putting in an application for another board of commission where we have, Ben can say?
Yes, I would consider it.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, David. Any questions for us?
Not yet.
Thank you very much. June, you're up next. Thank you for coming.
Everything will help the tissues in here and the residues of COVID.
Oh, no. Just so you know, you are going to be on camera. We're filming now. So on SEC TV.
Okay. It's so weird.
It's so strange.
I know, sitting here.
Thank you. Debbie, you want to?
Sure, I'll start. So I don't know if you heard some of the commission's questions when you came in, but the first question is, what is your opinion of the responsibilities and primary function of the Charter Revision Commission?
So it's to, you know, have a good knowledge of the current charter. And, I mean, there's a couple of things that, you know, could be changed. And just to discuss, you know, have a complete and full discussion about whatever it is everybody thinks should be changed or kept the same and, and then go from there.
Thank you. So probably use of the phone. If you want to talk about any relevant experience you've had professionally or through volunteer work and then any unique skill set you think you bring?
Well, my volunteer work. I've been volunteering in town since 1999. And I've been on several boards and commissions. I haven't been on all of them, but the ones that I haven't been a member of, I've attended the meetings. So, so I think I'll start in order of chronology. So I was on the Planning and Zoning Commission, I was on the Board of Finance Commission, Board of Selectmen. I've also been board chair for the Park Tech Neighborhood Center. And while not a member, have attended Commission on Aging, Police Commission, Climate Change Task Force Meeting, Inland Wetlands. And I think, I believe that the diversity of my volunteering experience has given me a unique perspective of the meaning of the town charter and its impact on the town and residents. And I have, oh, and I attended, I attended several of the meetings the last time the charter was opened. And I have a copy of it right here.
Ben, you know, June brought supplements. He keeps on that call.
All right. Next question. The other question. Upon completion of the Charter Review Commission, what would you consider a successful outcome?
That the residents vote, you know, voted in first go around. Know whatever changes, you know, the group comes up with.
Thank you. Ben, any follow-up question?
No, I do not, Daniel. Thank you very much, June.
Oh, you're welcome.
June, do you have any questions for us?
I don't.
Okay.
I guess how many, I know there's quite a few, you know, quite a few applicants, so how many people would it be finally?
So there's eight applicants right now and we actually, three withdrew. There were, I mean, there was even more than that that also withdrew. So Ben, Debbie and I, at the next meeting, will discuss finalizing, whether it's basically five or seven. That's kind of the discussion we've been having back and forth. So kind of thinking about the pros and cons of each of them, so.
Okay, all right.
Thank you. Good question.
That was my only, that was my only question.
I wanted to ask, yes. Good question.
And just because you came in, I know we told you a couple of little later, you're, we're going to decide at the March 12th meeting.
Okay. March 13th?
Or 13th, sorry.
Lucky 13th, lucky 13th, yeah.
It's March 13th, 13th.
So you guys don't have to be there by any means. We'll let you know, but that's when we'll have our awkward public discussion. All right. But thank you.
Thank you for coming.
And then Marcia was our last one, but she's not here yet, so we could just go on and come back to that? All right, so we're done with the interviews for now. Marcia Standish was our other one, but we're actually like on, we're actually pretty ahead of schedule. So we had told people who were later, they could come a little bit later on in the process. So you, you all are welcome to stay, but for now, we'll just move on with the rest of the meeting.
I'm going to stay.
Thank you. And since we barely have public comment, if we do have public here, is there any public comment? No? Okay, nothing there. So could I get a motion to approve the special meeting minutes of January 14th, 2024?
So moved.
Right here, second. Thanks, Ben. Any discussion?
No. We're good, thank you, Stacy.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. Thank you, Stacy. Under correspondence, just to note that Greg Sherrod withdrew his application for the Housing Authority and so we'll move on that later, later on at another meeting. Under reappointments and appointments, first is Shellfish. So could I get a motion to reappoint John Swenerton to the Shellfish Commission?
So moved.
Right here, second.
Second.
Any discussion?
No, just thank you to John for continuing to do that. I know he's referred us to that commission.
Yes, same. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. Yes, thank you to John. Next up is, could I get a motion to reappoint Jennifer Young to the Commission on Aging?
So moved.
Right here, second. Thanks, Ben. Any discussion on this?
No, just thank you for Jennifer to be willing to continue on the commission.
Yeah, remember when we couldn't get a quorum? So it's really wonderful that we have people willing to stay on. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, the me, the motion passes. So next up, and I'm just going to, Stacy, I'm sorry, I don't have Jim's cell phone. He's upstairs. Do you have a cell phone number?
I was going to come down.
He was going to come down. But let me know if you guys want me to get Jim, I can. But the next up is an award of bid for the engineering services for the North Pier Rehab Project.
I'm all right.
You're all right? Okay.
Yeah, I was on that call.
Yeah, so I guess just for the people here, it's very exciting. We had good interviews, a great group of people came together and in the end they selected Sound Engineering. Sound Engineering Associates, which we know locally as Daco, or the merger there, to be awarded the project in the amount of $185,000. Just as a background reminder, we have a $250,000 grant from the Connecticut Port Authority to do this work on the North Pier. And then we have the about $900,000 from the SBA through the congressionally directed funding, thanks to Congressman Courtney's office and others, to do the actual work. And we are on a tight timeline, which is why we quickly added this to this meeting, so they could get started on the work. So if I could get a motion to award the Engineering Services for the North Pier Rehab Project to Sound Engineering Associates LLC, DBA, Daco, in the amount of $185,000.
So moved.
Right here, second.
Second.
Any discussion or questions on this?
So they're going to get started right away. How long do they expect this to take?
So one of the reasons we or the group chose them was that they already have been familiarity in doing work down there on other things. But so they felt like they could do this pretty quickly. And the other thing that stood out was they were going to start pretty soon from the award to engage deep, because the biggest holdup isn't so much doing the design engineering, but likely the permitting. So they did have a very condensed timeline. Again, we could circulate it around, because I don't have it right here, and we can't get Jim from upstairs. But they were, again, the other firm was great and would really stand out in a lot of ways also. But they had, I think, the most ability to get this done in that tighter timeline.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions? Is not? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you. Look at guys, I mean, we are speeding along. We might have to wait though in case Marcia does come, so we'll stay on. But the next item is comments from the selectmen. So Ben, do you want to start? And then we'll go to Deb and then me.
Yeah, I know I don't have anything to say, Ben, so I'll probably hang up after comments from the selectmen.
Okay. And we'll be, obviously, we'll record this. It is being recorded, and we also have another recording, so if Marcia does come, you can listen to it.
Right, she's the only one that's listening, right?
Yep.
Okay. Very good.
All right. All right, so no updates there then? Debbie?
I didn't really prepare anything. I have a couple of things. I did meet, I tried to meet with Marianne Butler, the superintendent, once a month. So I did meet with her last week. And, you know, again, we talk about different ideas and possible collaboration and communication with the school. So we're kind of, we hadn't met for a couple of months, so we're kind of back on that. We also talked about, you know, the budget and impacts of the budget, hopefully some, maybe some additional costs to the budget. But it's a good meeting, and so it's nice that we have the open communication. I also attended the panel for women in leadership at the high school, which was really a great opportunity and experience, you know, with a number of other women, some of whom I had never met before.
Oh, nice.
And a group of students that were very engaged and asked a lot of questions.
That's good.
So it was a great program, and I was really happy to be included in that. I did yesterday, I attended, I guess you attended, a webinar about updates to the MS4 permit and the stormwater, the stormwater manual. So I will share some of that information. Some of it that I thought was especially pertinent was a presentation by the town of North Branford Engineer, talking about some of the projects they have done as part of the discontinuity of the impervious surface, rain gardens, tree wells, things that are, you know, not huge projects, but they've been able to do. He did emphasize though that, you know, they put them in and it ends up being town staff that does the maintenance on them, and albeit it's simpler maintenance than some of the other, you know, systems, stormwater systems. But he said, you know, you have to kind of take that into account when you do it. But they've been very successful. They put a couple in at the school, which they are also using as an education component and to meet their MS4 requirements. So that's probably it. I can't think of the thing, as I said, I didn't really prepare anything, but.
I'll be as brief as I ever am. There's a few things I thought would be good just to note for the record and also in case you guys weren't aware. One is that we are having a speaking of partnerships at the school through the Prevention Council, which Human Services oversees, but involves a lot of different players. And then the partnership with Stonington Public Schools, we have Chris Heron, who's a former basketball player coming to speak about addiction. And he's going to speak, whether permitting, no, I think it'll be okay, to both the middle school and the high school. And I think it's just one another example of you, kind of the power of the partnerships that we've been able to through, you know, both funding and putting resources together, hopefully bring in a really moving and touching presentation that will hopefully resonate with the students.
That's great. This is a grant that brought that in, right?
This is actually through some of the opioid settlement money. So that was a good use, obviously, for sad reasons that we were getting that money, but a good use. And again, it was the kind of discussions about what would resonate and who the students might most want to hear from. And you kind of, then Kristen within the Human Services team was able to kind of do a deeper dive and identified him as a really great contender, and then was able to bring him in. And then the schools were actually open to it, and they're having large auditorium presentations about this. So I think it will report back. I'm going to attend one, and then the two people from Human Services, Leanne and Kristen, are going to attend the other, so we can see it from our point of view, as well, obviously school staff will be there. So I think it'll be really moving, but we'll see, we'll report back about how that goes. Also, I had a meeting yesterday, this week has been crazy, with members of Westerly, the Westerly Town Manager, their head of their Economic Development Commission, their state senator, and a few other planner, I think someone else is there that I'm bringing, but, oh, and then their deputy town manager. And we were talking about rail service. Oh, and Zell, wonderful Zell, who's come to present to our board before in the past about the expanded commuter train service. And Westerly's actually been making some progress on their side with their DOT and their governor about potentially raising their platform, because that's one of the big holdups for extending Shoreline East, similar to why Shoreline East has a challenge coming to Mystic. Our platform isn't accessible. There's obviously maybe some engineering solutions that can be involved with the train side or raising of the platforms or new train stations. So we were talking about how we could do more to support the effort if we combined two states, two efforts, so both, you know, are obviously local, then state delegations, and then federal delegation. So Congressman Courtney's been very supportive of this effort. They actually, their state senator had been, no, sorry, their federal senator had been attached with him. So they're kind of on board. So we have different missing pieces, so we're going to try and work together with our state delegation. I believe Christine Conley is leading the effort here to write to DOT and to the governor, because there are federal grants that we could be applying for. But of course, there would be a state match, so they need to have the support, to show there's a support locally, and then there's a support, you know, from the state financially and through DOT. So it was, you know, an early-stage meeting, and I'll circle back with you guys. There's going to be a meeting about Shoreline East coming up in New London in March that I'll try and attend, but if you guys wanted to, or I know there's a lot of people who are interested in this topic, that we could get the word out to, and I think people from DOT will be there. So that was interesting.
Did they talk about the other direction? Like the commuter comes from Boston and ends in Wigford, and it goes to T F Green. Did they talk about that?
They did. So that's part of, like, they would like it to extend, obviously, for us, it would benefit our how-to, but to Westerly, but then also to how to get then that to Providence, and then also the T F Green angle, because obviously also Connecticut residents would love to take a train to a train station that's, you know, 40 minutes away. So that was definitely part of it, and it seems like they're, they're, they're a small and mighty state. They're pretty nimble and efficient. They've been having, I think, some really promising conversations with the, I think it's out of Massachusetts there.
MTD.
Yeah. And then also with their governor and their DOT are pretty on board with all of this. So hopefully, I think, we were saying, I think it's just a connecting the dots issue and communication, and hopefully, because like they said, nobody knows what's going to happen post this November election, and, you know, there is this federal money that's there and approved, and Connecticut and Rhode Island haven't gotten very much of it. So we're competing with other states, but if we come together, we might have a chance to get some of this federal money.
Yeah, that's great.
So we'll see where that goes. I'll definitely keep you guys updated, but it was a very promising meeting. Clearly, the budget is taking up a lot of time worthwhile, but we've had many, many nights of budget meetings and meetings in between, and lots of efforts, lots of staff time and Board of Finance volunteer time, and it's just really appreciated. And we just keep trying to reiterate, it'd be really wonderful to get more residents out and involved. And if you can't come to the meetings, you read through the budget, reach out to the selectmen's office. I'm having to sit and talk through budget questions. Can also connect you to specific department heads if you have questions there. And then also Board of Finance members are pretty much always willing to talk and meet and go through that. And I am excited. I think they might finalize it, if not tonight, tomorrow. They do have a budget message, which they've never done before, that will get put on the town website and an actual email address for the, that will go to the chair, so that way they can, people can correspond directly with the Board of Finance instead of always through the Director of Finance or through the selectmen's office. So, you know, I think everybody's trying to be transparent and engaging, and hopefully people will take us up on that. But again, you know, June, we have tonight budget, tomorrow budget, Monday budget, and then Thursday, next Thursday, deliberations, and that's a really key one, I'd say, for residents to come to, is the deliberations. You really get a sense of their thinking, and then can help tailor any comments that you might want to make for when we have the public hearing.
And I want to say, once again, listening to the outside agencies last week do their presentation, it's so impactful. You realize just how much they do for the town.
They do. A lot of them do a lot of work that, again, it's complimentary and it augments the work that, you know, our town staff is already doing, but it's definitely not duplicated, and it's additional, and it's so needed. So, no, we appreciate everything they do. Then on that, I guess I'd say I'm very excited Thursday, because we just jammed, tomorrow, it's Thursday, we jammed everything we could into this week. We have our first staff outing to the New London Homeless Hospitality to their soup kitchen. So we have about nine people, including myself, going and volunteering. Figured it'd be helpful. We volunteered before at the food pantry, the General Moran Food Pantry, and it was, I think, a really good, you know, kind of teen-building type experience for, and then we wanted to do more and obviously just to give back as well, as we say, all these agencies do so much. So it's nice, we have representatives from kind of like the general, if you're thinking about the budget, general government, from Human Services, from the police, from solid ways, you know, pretty much across the spectrum, we have different people coming. So I think it'll be hopefully a positive experience, and then we might open it up to board and commission members as well, because we have four other, three other dates that were signed up for. So not just staff, maybe. And then, I guess maybe just to close on something positive, it was really great having Monday's town meeting. It was since 2018, the town, different volunteers and officials have been working on due diligence for the surface lot with the idea of potentially making that a public park. And then the Cemetery Commission kind of volunteers have been going for probably almost two years. So it was, I think it was a nice moment for the community, respecting those who came before us, and then also hopefully looking to the future of that park. So I'll stop there. I know there's a lot more happening, but. Can you talk about that transition program? Because maybe someone listening would want to. Oh, yeah, we're trying to partner, and if you guys have ideas, through Stonington Public Schools, they have this wonderful transition program for young, teens to young adults. And they want to give that with special needs experiences out in the community. And so some of the, in the past, they've had people work at like Dog Watch or, you know, different businesses, but they thought, wouldn't it be great to do something with the town? We're sort of struggling to find the right, you know, something that'd be interesting and engaging. So we're trying to think about what we might be able to do there, but also to say, you know, they're always looking for other nonprofits or businesses who might be interested in taking. It could be one student, it could be three students, I think they go up to nine students. It's typically, I think, seven to two weekdays that they're looking for this, and it could be, you know, just one hour of time, it could be longer. So they're really flexible. It's a wonderful program. So if anyone, you guys know of anything, if anybody's listening, they could reach out to our office or right to Stonington Public Schools, to the Department of Special Education.
Yes.
I think Allison Fana and then her team oversee that. So we get anything else? No? All right. All right, well, Ben, anything else on your end?
Do you have any, do you want Marcia to be here?
I think.
I sent her a text.
Yeah.
And reach out and see if she's coming.
Stacy's trying to give her a call right now.
Because I think her time is like now, which is.
Yeah. I think Stacy would ask people to come like 15 minutes ahead of their time, but things come up, things happen.
I don't know how I would have your look fit.
I know, people are very, they're not a talker, talking group, that's good.
Sometimes, sometimes interviews take a lot longer.
Great. Thanks, Stacy, just left a message. So, yeah, Ben, it's okay. I think we'll stay here a little bit longer. We can shoot you a message if she does come, but we'll probably wind down in five minutes.
Yeah, I'll watch the video.
Okay, Ben, thanks for calling in.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Okay, so should we call it?
Should we do, should we, you can't really adjourn.
Yeah. I think we should just call it, and we could always, we'll circle back with her.
Yeah.
All right. Well, with that, we will adjourn the February 28, 2024 special meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.